I'd like to call to order this meeting of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board for February, Tuesday, Thursday, February 18th, 2021. I'm getting a little feedback on my device. They're going to work on that. I'd like to move to notice and instructions. The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity of the Professional Development Center meeting room space. Once the capacity has been reached, admission to the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request. All audience members will also undergo temperature screening before entering the meeting room. The regular meeting scheduled for February 18th, 2021 at 5:00 PM will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found on board docs located at the school board website. A period of public comment will be provided before the meeting as well as before each action is taken by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the agenda item in the board docs and submit via the highlighted public comment hyperlink on the agenda item details. Online comments are available for public review. That is the official notice. The unofficial notice is please silence your cell phones or any noise-making devices you have, and please be sensitive to social distancing while you are here in our presence for safety purposes. I'd like to call right now on Board Member Connie Bernard to lead us in the invocation, and we followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Board Member Darius Lannis. Ms. Bernard?
Please bow your head in prayer. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for sparing us from weather harsher than we experienced and for bringing us safely here. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to respect the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our superintendent, for the various levels of administrators and educators, for our students and families, and in particular for this assembled school board. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our students, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Baton Rouge. In your most blessed name I pray, amen.
We move to item B2. Madam Secretary, will you please call a roll?
President Tatman.
President.
Vice President Collins. District One, Mr. Baloo.
Here.
District Two, Mr. Lannis.
Present.
District Three, Mr. Howard. District Five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Here.
District Six, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District Seven, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District Eight, Mrs. Bernard.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We move now to item D, recognitions, D1, Teachers of the Year. Recognition of the 2020-2021 East Baton Rouge Parish School System's Teachers of the Year. Ms. Donaldson?
Good evening, Mr. Tatman, and in Ms. Collins' absence, good evening for the rest of the board. I am Daphne Donaldson, Director for Human Resources, and it is my honor and privilege to present to you on behalf of the Office of Human Resources our 2021 Teachers of the Year. 2020 has been an amazingly challenging year for educators, and so we are so pleased with these educators who have shown not just that they have grit, but they have innovation, they care about their students, that they are trying to make a difference in this world and in this community. And so we are so honored to have the task of selecting the top three winners for our district. They actually participated in a rigorous competition against 76 other educators, and these three finalists, these three winners, will actually go and compete at the state level. So I'm going to allow my colleague, Ms. Shayna Wilson, to introduce each one of our teachers. And I would like to also thank the EBR Foundation, our committee who participated in the selection, Mr. Jeff Russell with Horace Mann Insurance Agency. We've sent a lot of amazing things to these teachers, and we kind of got behind because of the weather this week, but we're excited about this opportunity. So I'll let Ms. Wilson start. Thank you.
Thank you again for this amazing opportunity to present these awards to these amazing teachers. Our first recipient is Ms. Miranda Juno, Elementary School Teacher of the Year. Miranda Juno's teaching career has spanned just over 11 years. She has taught math and science at Mayfair Lab School since 2017. Ms. Juno has been instrumental in the creation of the East Baton Rouge Parish Schools' science curriculum documents, as well as presented professional development on use, integration, and implementation of technology in the science and mathematics classroom to our teachers. As a lesson developer, Ms. Juno plans for time in her class to be an opportunity for adventure for students by infusing hands-on applications and technology-rich activities into the curriculum to assist her students in forming real-life connections between science and mathematic topics. She further develops activities that encourage critical and creative thinking by leading students on virtual field trips to unattainable locations such as NASA, or through building and creating sustainable hydroponic tower gardens. Ms. Juno is a natural leader who works tirelessly to promote positive school culture as a leader of the School Culture Committee that encourages teachers to teach beyond what can simply be done with paper and pencil. Miranda Juno values the individuality that each student brings to her classroom and prides herself on the connections that are made with her students. According to one parent, she is able to look beyond behaviors to really see the true student. In the end, those connections will further learning for our students and make a positive difference in their overall life. Congratulations, Elementary School Teacher of the Year for Mayfair Lab, Ms. Miranda Juno.
Thank you.
Ms. Juno.
Yes.
On behalf of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, and me as Mayfair representative, the faculty of Mayfair, congratulations, as well deserved.
Thank you so much. Thanks for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Our next recipient is our Middle School Teacher of the Year. Ms. Adeline Owens hails from Sherwood Middle School, and she is a natural-born teacher. She has only been teaching since 2017, but she plans and executes lessons and cultivates relationships with peers and students like one with a wealth of educational experience. Ms. Owens has been teaching English Language Arts at Sherwood Middle since beginning her career in 2017. In the short four years that she has been a teacher, she has proved her value emerging as sixth-grade team leader, showing she has an inherent knack for knowing how to connect, relate to, and inspire a middle-school learner. Ms. Owens is the educational leader that the students at Sherwood Middle see when they enter the campus, and they are able to foster a relationship with Ms. Owens that can last well beyond their time as a student at the school. Ms. Owens seeks to form personal connections with her students and brings aspects of the students' lives into the classroom through stimulating and engaging literature lessons that motivate them. Ms. Owens is able to take issues that present social and emotional challenges in the lives of developing middle-schoolers and diffuse and stimulate thinking about the concepts through selected literature. Her students learn about challenging issues; they develop independent thoughts and opinions based on their newfound knowledge. She provides exposure to students in a safe space so that they learn to appreciate the diversity that exists among their peers. In addition to serving in her capacity as sixth-grade team leader, Ms. Owens also holds the distinction of being the moderator of the state of Louisiana's largest junior beta club. She encourages achievements through academics and celebrates greatness within each of her students. Congratulations again to Ms. Adeline Owens, Sherwood Middle School, Middle School for East Baton Rouge Parish, Teacher of the Year.
Congratulations, Ms. Owens. I want to present you with a superintendent's medal. We're very fortunate to have you in our school system. I think we'll be hearing your name a lot more in the future.
Well, thank you so much.
Our final award recipient, Dr. Dewana Drury, the High School Teacher of the Year. Dr. Drury joined East Baton Rouge Parish School System in 2017 as a Health and Physical Education Teacher at Tara High School, but her career in education began nearly 20 years ago in North Carolina. Dr. Drury models lifelong learning for her students. She takes great pride in developing pedagogy and often can be seen reading and implementing the latest research or studies outlining the most successful professional practices. She frequently seeks opportunities to collaborate with peers in ways that will enrich students' learning by expanding the scope of traditional curricular activities and projects to include writing and physical activity projects in physical education. As an active member of the school's PBIS team, Dr. Drury started the LIT, which stands for Leading and Inspiring Teens Initiative at Tara High School that provides social and emotional support and connections for targeted female students. Dr. Drury also serves on the Tara High School Leadership Team, she's the Physical Education Department Chair, and a collaboration with a partnership that she brought to Tara High School with the Greater Family Road Service Organization of Baton Rouge. Dr. Drury makes connections with students, and she finds ingenious techniques to use physical education to build students' self-esteem, develop relationships, and infuse a love for physical activity at a variety of levels into students' lives, resulting in overall improvement of both bodies and minds through physical education classes. Congratulations, Dr. Dewana Drury, High School Teacher of the Year.
On behalf of the school board and your school board representative for Tara High School, for the faculty at Tara High School, the students and all of the families, congratulations, and thank you for all that you do to serve our students every day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donaldson. Thank you all, and thank you to you three amazing educators that we have the privilege of having you in our district. We're just so excited. In fact, we're so excited, I forgot to do the minutes. I was just so excited to get to this. But I was wondering if we could try to figure out a way to get you three to come up, turn around, and we try to do a social distance picture, because this is a very important recognition, and I think the rest of the district and the rest of the world ought to see it. So if y'all will come up. We're going to go with them, get behind them. Yeah, y'all just turn around. Yeah, let's go. Yeah, let's go walk back there. You got them.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. All right, you got it.
Well, I wouldn't smile. Congratulations, ladies.
to item C1 and move for approval of the minutes. Well, I'm going to set forth approval of the January 21st, 2021 Regular School Board Meeting Minutes and the February 4th, 2021 Special Board Minutes and Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as published in the Official Journal. Do I have a motion moved by Ms. Bernard and seconded by Ms. Ware Jackson? Any questions on the minutes from the board? Any comments from the audience on the minutes? Seeing none, back to the board. Madam Secretary, please call a roll.
District One, Mr. Baloo.
Yes.
District Two, Mr. Lannis.
Here.
District Three, Mr. Howard. District Four, Ms. Collins. District Five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District Six, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District Seven, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
District Eight, Ms. Bernard.
Yes.
District Nine, Mr. Tatman.
Yes, the minutes are approved. We move now to, back to the fun stuff, recognitions, D2, the 2019-2020 Louisiana Boys Basketball Coach of the Year. The National Federation of State High School Associations has selected Carlos Sample of Scottlinville Magnet High as the 2019-2020 Louisiana Boys Basketball Coach of the Year. Ms. Williamson?
Good evening, President Tatman, Vice President Collins, Superintendent Narcisse, and members of the board. It gives me great pleasure to recognize an outstanding coach and individual and human being, Mr. Carlos Sample. Coach Sample was just named the 2019-2020 Louisiana Boys Basketball Coach of the Year by the National Federation of High School Coaches. He was nominated by the Louisiana High School Athletic Association, or the LHSAA. This award is given to an individual based on their coaching performance, lifetime, community involvement, school involvement, and philosophy of coaching. Coach Sample is in his 14th year at Scottlinville High and has an overall record of 418 wins and 171 losses. That's incredible. Under Coach Sample's leadership, Scottlinville High has played in the LHSAA title game for 11 straight years. That is a record in Louisiana. There's been no one else in the history of Louisiana that has had that accomplishment. He's won seven of those 11, and then he has won the past four years. So we'll make it five, Carlos. Community involvement, he works with EBR Salt, he volunteers at a group that donates food to families in need during the holiday season. He works with Jump Start Your Heart Foundation. He visits the sick, and he's even read to the elementary schools around Scottlinville High. This is part of his coaching philosophy, I just want to read to you. As the coach, it is of utmost importance for me to be both well-disciplined and well-organized. The assistant coaches and staff should be able to mirror the positive behaviors that I set forth. In addition, my aggressiveness and commitment to playing by the rules should foster appropriate behavior on and off the court. And this is shown with his student athletes, their model, citizens and school student athletes. Ms. Quiet is here in the back. I thank her for her support. And then again, Carlos, Coach Sample, congratulations.
Mrs. Superintendent, congratulations, board members. Ms. Tiffany Quiet, A.D., Mr. Thompson, I accept this award, but it's just not me. You know, I thank God, but also I have two assistant coaches that deserves this just as much as I do. They work just as hard as I do. That's Jeremy Noah and Joshua Washington, and they both played with me when I was coaching at a Schrumah High, you know, so now they're my coworkers, they're my assistant coaches. But on behalf of them, my players, the school, the community, Ms. Quiet, the administration, I accept this award, and we're looking forward to trying to close this season with another state championship. So thank you for your support and look forward to seeing you in Lake Charles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Coach, on behalf of the community, the school board, the Dr. Narcisse, the superintendent. We thank you, we congratulate you. What you're doing for kids in Scottlinville is just second to none. I remember growing up in a community where there's a lot of hopeless things happening. You provide a lot of hope for the community and the entire city, so we applaud you, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Appreciate you, Coach. Thank you so much.
And Coach Sample, I just want to say, I really love watching your team play, but I really love watching what you do with those young men off the court. When you go to, when you show up at a game, you look like a college team. All the kids are dressed up nice, just, you know, teaching them lessons both on and off the court has such a huge impact, and you've had such a huge impact on so many kids. And I know winning isn't everything, but we do want another state championship. Okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Tatman, if you don't mind, I.
Okay, I'm sorry, Coach, you're not done yet.
Coach Sample.
Overtime.
Right, overtime. Coach Sample, so of course, I'm pretty sure you know, I come from Glanosland, so I'm an Adjubors, what we call the players over in Glanos, man, but let me tell you, just say something, thing that goes without saying. What you have done at that school with those young men, not just the young men, but the students, and how you motivate them, how you get them to get involved, and these are students that, a lot of them came from disadvantaged backgrounds, but yet you still have managed not only to change their lives, but change the lives of their families. With this being a historic month for people of color, I want you to know how much you are respected in this community and how grateful we are that we have someone like you leading the way for those young men over there. My hat goes off to you. You have built a perennial powerhouse again in the North Baton Rouge community, and my hat just, it goes off to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. I think you want in overtime. You got it. Thank you so much for all the work you do. We move now to item D3, VIPS Partners in Education, recognition of the VIPS Partners in Education for January, Athletes for Hope, Southern University athlete, Aubreyon James. Ms. Simmons?
Greetings, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'd like to begin by, on behalf of volunteers in public schools, personally welcoming Dr. Narcisse to our East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Greetings, President Tatman, and Vice President Collins, and members of the school board. We are here this month to recognize another amazing partnership with Athletes for Hope. We have been vigilant with keeping our partners and volunteers engaged and mobilized through our partnership with Athletes for Hope, specifically Athletes for Hope University, the collegiate branch. We have been developing content for our YouTube page, which is VIPS Baton Rouge, in which we have the student athletes submitting workout videos, exercise videos, as well as storytimes, which can be used by physical education teachers in the schools, including virtual students at home. We think it's important that students who may be at home or unable to have normal physical education classes in schools to be encouraged to stay mobile and active and engaged. Also, it's very important for them to see collegiate representation in our volunteer base, which may motivate them and as well as shows that college students, young, are still advocating literacy and see the importance of encouraging students to continue to read and as well as be active. I'm going to let Aubreyon James here, who is representing Athletes for Hope, speak on her behalf about the experience, developing content for our site in the theme of supporting literacy and keeping our youth active. She is representing Southern University's softball team. And thank you, Aubreyon, for being here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aubreyon James. I am an Athletes for Hope intern and also a softball player at Southern University. And I just want to say that Athletes for Hope is honored to partner with VIPS, and our main focus really is to just find athletes that have a passion for giving back and to really find a motive in the community to give back to. So one thing that we really focused on this school year with VIPS was the storytime and activity videos, as Kaia said. And basically, those videos are made by LSU teams and Southern teams, and it's where the teams will read a children's book, and then they'll participate in some type of activity or exercise. So I think that this is very important for the kids, especially because they spend so much time inside with the pandemic going on, and it's important for them to know that you have to find a balance between, you know, your schoolwork and the screen time and go outside and, you know, get your blood flowing, not just your brain flowing. So, and it's also important to us as athletes because we don't only want to use our platforms just for our sport, but we also want to use our platform to be known for enriching the younger generation because we won't be able to play our sports forever, and they're going to have to fill our shoes one day. So yes, I just would like to say thank you to VIPS again for allowing us to partner with you all, and we look forward to continuing to do so. So thank you all.
Thank you.
President, I present this to you on behalf of the board and the superintendent, and thank you for all the hard work that you do and the fine example you set for all of our students. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Aubreyon. I'd also like to just briefly mention that.
Thank you, Aubreyon. I'd also like to just briefly mention that we are having our annual Partners in Education webinar. For those of you who are familiar with what we do, we, it's typically a luncheon. Of course, we've had to make some adjustments. So this will be a webinar online on the 26th of this month. It will be aired on our Facebook, which is Volunteers in Public Schools, as well as our YouTube channel, VIPS Baton Rouge. Please register through our website if anyone is interested. The theme, yeah, the website is vipsb-r.org, just so you know. The theme this year is Public Education Then and Now: Is It Still the Path to Freedom? We are, in light of Black History Month, we are thrilled to have Dr. Narcisse as one of our panelists. Among the three panelists is also Preston Castile with Taylor Porter Law Firm and Bessie Board, as well as Kenneth Morris, who is a direct descendant of Frederick Douglass, representing the Frederick Douglass Family Initiative. So it's going to be a wonderful content discussed, discussing the state of our public education, then, in the past, and present, and with Dr. Narcisse's contribution, the future. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. We move to Item D4, Consideration of Adoption of a Resolution Proclaiming March 2021 as Arts in Our Schools Month. Ms. Ware Jackson.
Thank you, President Tatman. East Baton Rouge Parish School System proclamation in support of Arts in Our Schools Month, from the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. Whereas March has been designated by the National Dance Education Organization as Dance in Our Schools Month, by the National Association for Music Education as Music in Our Schools Month, by the National Theater Association as Theater in Our Schools Month, and by the Council for Arts Education as Youth Art Month. And whereas arts education in East Baton Rouge Parish Schools includes four separate and distinct disciplines, dance, music, theater arts, and visual arts, each with its own body of knowledge and skills, and whereas the arts have been part of life from the very beginning, and are an inseparable part of the human journey, describing, defining, and deepening the human experience. And whereas the arts are everywhere in our lives, adding depth and dimension to the environment we live in, and shaping our experience daily. And whereas arts education contributes to students' development through heightened skills in listening, understanding human experiences, creative problem solving, adapting to and respecting others' diverse ways of thinking, communicating effectively, as well as analyzing nonverbal communication, reading, self-expression, imagination of humankind, creativity. And whereas arts education innovatively ignites and engages learners personally, and enhances the social and emotional morale, as well as the quality of all students and all school cultures by helping develop self-confidence, boost self-reliance, and increase empathy and compassion towards oneself and others. And whereas arts education is essential for all students in EBR as part of a well-rounded education, now therefore be resolved, the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board does hereby proclaim March 2021 as Arts in Our Schools Month, and urges all citizens to celebrate and acknowledge every day, but especially in March, that arts education is an essential part of every student's education in East Baton Rouge Parish School System. And I so move approval of this resolution.
Moved by Ms. Ware Jackson, seconded by Mr. Goday.
Good evening, President Tatman, members of the board, Dr. Narcisse. Thank you for this opportunity to acknowledge the arts and everything that it brings to the district. If I stand up here, we'll be here until 1:00 in the morning talking about how much I enjoy the arts. But we do so much, and those teachers are sometimes overlooked. So I'm asking everyone, if you see an art teacher, a music teacher, a dance teacher, any type of teacher that has anything to do with the arts, just pat them on the back, tell them they're doing a great job. Because those are the teachers, I still say since I was one, are the ones that make the memorable experiences memorable, and those artistic experiences artistic. So we thank you for that this month, this month and every other month. And please continue to support us in everything that we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joffreyon. Yes, I agree. March will focus on it, but every month should be arts months, right?
Every month.
Brings so much to our lives. Thank you for your work and the work of all the teachers who work in so many different areas. Thank you very much. Seeing no other comments or questions from the board, we go to the audience on the resolution, on the arts resolution. Any comments from the audience on the arts resolution? Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District One, Mr. Baloo.
Yes.
District Two, Mr. Lanis.
Yes.
District Four, I'm sorry, District Three, Mr. Howard.
Yes.
District Five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District Six, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District Seven, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
District Eight, Mrs. Bernard.
Yes.
District Nine, Mr. Tatman.
Yes. Thank you. We move now to Item E1, for information. Number one, the monthly financial report. You'll find it in your packet. I believe, Dr. Narcisse, is this where you would like to, yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you, President Goday. I'm sorry, President Tatman. You guys don't look alike, I just want to show.
We look alike.
As we continue to build our work here in East Baton Rouge, we wanted to make sure that we continue to build transparency across our community, and also to make sure that people know that we are fiscally responsible in our approach to providing the best for our students, and our staff has been working hard towards that. And so, one of the changes and shifts that you will see in our informational section is to provide a monthly report to the entire community around our finances. And as we think through those, through our steps, as we continue to build towards our new strategic plan, we will all be able to see where we are allocating our dollars to get the most for our kids and the supports of our students. And so we will hear from our Chief Financial Officer that will provide at least one, every board may be, information concerning that report.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Narcisse. We move to Item E2, Personnel Changes. Are there any comments from, oh, I'm sorry. Well, she's got, I think she's on the agenda for a presentation. Am I wrong?
President Tatman.
All right. If it's okay with you, I'll take you in order. So we'll bring you back up. So we have Item E2, Personnel Changes. Any comments or questions on personnel changes from the board? Seeing none, we receive as information and update from the superintendent.
What a week. Let me begin by saying how much I appreciate the staff of East Baton Rouge. Our community has been through a hurricane and now a winter storm. And I just want to commend our staff and all of the personnel that have really committed themselves to ensuring the best for our community and our children. Through floods, hurricanes, power outage, icy roads, and a pandemic, I have so much respect for this team and their steadfast devotion to the children and the Baton Rouge community. It's an honor to serve alongside an extraordinary group of educators, and thank you for continuing to show up for kids every single day without any complaint. And so I just wanted us to recognize our people. A few updates. Thank you to our facilities and emergency response teams for the diligent efforts in assessing our communities and schools before, during, and after the recent winter storm. Your dedication and responsiveness to your duties helped to keep us all safe in facilities, opening of schools, and getting us through our challenging inclement weather events. I'd also like to thank the Teaching and Learning Team for an incredible district-wide professional development day yesterday. It includes sessions with comedian Eddie B. Over. We had about 1,584 employees register for the virtual professional development. I believe early in that day was about 2,000 something that was in the morning session. So we're really excited that we've received a lot of positive feedback from staff for that work. ACT testing day is March 9. High schools are doing a great job preparing for that, and we will continue to support students for that. And so families, if there are any questions and concerns, or even ways that you want to, you think about for us to help provide support for the ACT, please let us know. The Innovation Network schools are participating in a virtual teacher recruitment fair on March 4. The second magnet application period of under-subscribed schools began February 1 and extends through May 31, 2021. If necessary, an extended period will provide opportunities for parents until June 30, 2021. Congratulations to Baton Rouge Magnet High School for producing four more Presidential Scholar candidates, Varun Dhaka, Riley Jenkins, Justin Kim, and Olivia Smith. These four scholars join Faris Fardusi, J. Iar, and Jay Wu No, for the total of seven Presidential Scholars from Baton Rouge Magnet High. Last but not least, I'd like to congratulate, congratulations to Cadet Sergeant Caitlin Asano from Woodland High School. She earned a second place honors in the EBR JROTC Leadership Education and Training Level 2 Competition. And we are always excited about the great work our people do, and also our students and their performance, and I just want to make sure that we continuously celebrate that. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Narcisse. Mr. Lanis.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Narcisse. This is just a quick question. Is it possible, and because we are in the season of COVID, is it possible for us to get more masks for our staff, our support staff? I can't tell you how many people have reached out asking for the EBR school's mask. I see several people sporting a knight, especially Ms. Williamson. You're looking good with it. But several people have reached out from bus drivers to teachers, and that was just simple request I wanted to put in for you.
We can look into that. We can have that for everyone, so that shouldn't be a problem. And on the, another note, just to share with that, Board Member Lanis, today we sent a message out after the governor did his report at 2:30 this afternoon, that we are working towards vaccines for all of our teachers, which I'm hopeful that that process will begin on Monday. Well, more information will soon to come. We did share that with staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanis. Thank you, Dr. Narcisse. We move now to Item G1, Black History Month. Black History Month presentations by Humanities Amp and Metromorphosis. You want to intro, Evelyn? I'm sorry, Ms. Ware Jackson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tatman, President Tatman. I'm just so proud to welcome Humanities Amp and Metromorphosis to give us this presentation today. A few months ago, our board passed a resolution around eradicating racism and putting some effort into a little, a little more, putting a little more punch into the month of February and carrying the whole idea of Black history throughout the year and into the curriculum, hopefully. And this is one part of this, and I'm just so very proud of these two organizations. And I have to say, you know, I'm exceptionally proud of my dear friend Asia Reese, because I've known her since she was just a little girl, and I'm so proud of her. So it gives me great pleasure to bring this to the board and to the public in Baton Rouge.
Good evening, and thank you so much, Superintendent Narcisse, and members of the board. I'm Sherida Harrison, and I serve as the Sustainability Catalyst for Metromorphosis. And I'm delighted to stand here and talk to you today about our citywide Black History Celebration that we partnered with Humanities Amp and a number of other organizations in the community. And so at Metromorphosis, our mission of transforming urban communities is very much rooted in equipping and developing a critical mass of engaged citizens, and then connecting those citizens with the systems that have impact in their lives. And so for Black History Month, we really wanted to take on a project that was really driven by the community. And so we partnered with a number of organizations and distributed a written history of Black Baton Rouge, which is available for download on our website. And we distributed this document with engagement guides and encouraged people to engage in conversations and discussions around the rich history of Black Baton Rouge. We named this celebration Black Futures of Sankofa Series because Sankofa is from the Ghanaian word that is literally translated as "it is not taboo to fetch what is at risk of being left behind." And so many of you may be familiar with the work that Metromorphosis has done through the Urban Congress to raise graduation rates, or through OSOE to increase family-school partnerships. And quite literally, we are concerned with those people, those communities, those families, that the dominant narrative would tell you have been left behind. And so in that spirit of Sankofa, we wanted to introduce this very rich history, and I continue to say rich history, because we take an asset-based approach at Metromorphosis. And we wanted our youth to understand from where they came, so that they can plot a reasonable course for the future. If you look at the media and if you look at some of the statistics, it will have you to believe that Black communities, Black citizens in Baton Rouge have not contributed much to this city, and we know that to be not true. And so this document is a historical, it's written, so that our kids and our students can learn from that. And to that end, we partnered with Humanities Amp to kind of bring this to the school system, and I'll let Ms. Asia tell you guys a little bit more
Good evening, everyone. This is a real full-circle moment for me. I was the 2017 Student of the Year, a proud McKinley Senior High School alumna, a current senior at Spelman College, and it just gives me such great pleasure to stand before y'all tonight in this capacity for Black History Month. Thank you, thank you. And also a proud member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Now, to continue, if you could bring back up the Humanities Amp slide, I would like to brag on Humanities Amp a bit, because it was a big part of my development as a young organizer in high school. Humanities Amp, we amplify well-being, critical literacy, and civic-minded problem solving in public schools, so that every educator and youth is engaged in a powerful success. And that was definitely my experience in high school, and I wanted to carry that tradition, especially right now for Black History Month, given everything that our students have been through. If you go to the next slide for me? Thank you so much. So, we're having a virtual Black History Month program featuring two community elders and two young community organizers. So you can see that we have Ms. Myra Richardson, who is a proud Baton Rouge High School alumna, who's doing amazing things in the community. Literally Google her. Ms. Maxine Crump, who's a founder of Dialogue on Race, and also was instrumental in desegregating Louisiana State Universities' residences. And Mr. Press Robinson, who was instrumental in desegregating EBR school system. And Anthony Kennedy, who was the former Southern University SGA president. And we're also going to have a poetry workshop at the end of this event to just give students the opportunity to express themselves, basically, in honor of Sankofa, much like my prestigious colleague, Ms. Sherida, was talking about. He can go to the next slide. And so part of how we were planning and envisioning to just develop steam for this program is we've been working with the EBR Parish School System to develop a curriculum, and just poetry workshops to get students excited, to expose them to the wonderful article that Metromorphosis has created that documents Black history in Black Baton Rouge specifically. Because I think one thing that a lot of students don't understand, much to Ms. Sherida's point, is just that Black people have really worked hard for us to get the standard that we do have in Baton Rouge, and there's still a lot more work that's left to be done, and they can do that at any age. And I think that that's the main takeaway that we want the students to take away from our programming. And we've also been collecting visual and performing literary arts, much to Ms. Jackson's point about the prelude to March being our art celebration month. I think that this is going to be a great time for students to really express themselves and show off just all of their talents in honoring Black history this month. You go to the next slide. And our ultimate goal is that we want to create a curriculum that EBR Parish School Systems can use to document and display all of the contributions that Black people have made in Baton Rouge, so that they can understand that Black people have been instrumental for Baton Rouge being the amazing city that it is today. That's really all I have for you tonight, but thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That's fantastic. Thank you. Thank you so much. That's fantastic. Thank you. Darius, did you, you're up? Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Lannis. I keep slipping.
First, I have to stand up in this moment. I'm so sorry.
Be fine.
But in as much history as we have lost over the years, generations, I have to commend both of you, both your organizations, for everything you do. You can see this shirt, after reading the article that was written, it inspired me so much that I wanted to wear this shirt tonight. And it says that 1913, the only school that Blacks could attend in Baton Rouge was called the colored, I'm sorry, the Baton Rouge Colored High School. And when I read it, it impacted me so much that we need more of this. So I commend you all, and I just have to give a thank you.
And just coincidentally, Vice President Collins has put together a 2021 Culture and Diversity Reader, and I believe the first listing is Black Baton Rouge Today. But it's, and I'm not going to steal her thunder. She may want to present it at another meeting, but it literally provides three or four examples each month that you can read on, and it's really well broken down. And so you made the top of the list. So I think that's great. There's, I've looked through some of this and downloaded it already. So thank you so much, and thank you for being here, and thank you for being a proud product of the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. We move now back to Ms. Lopez. Item, wait, what? Oh, I'm sorry. I don't, they're not showing up on my.
That's okay. I understand how hard it is to do this.
Well, I wanted to get it fixed if I can, if somebody could come redo this.
I just wanted to add to Ms. Lannis's comment. I have read that article. The entire article is very well done, and I recommend that everyone in the audience read that. I do not have access to shirt printers, so I don't have a shirt. But it was a very well-done article, and again, I encourage everyone to read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. Somebody else? Anybody else? Okay, we're going to fix this little technical difficulty right here. We move now to item G2, Monthly Budget Update. Ms. Lopez? I can just try to do it on here if you do.
Good evening, Board Members, and Dr. Narcisse. As Dr. Narcisse explained, I'm going to come up and speak to y'all every month regarding the budget. You already received the one page that I complete, and it's in your board docs that shall review every month. And the data is also included in the data dashboard that is included and updated for y'all every month. But this way, we can have an open and honest conversation. If you have any questions, we can talk about it and, and really get a true understanding of the budget instead of waiting until I bring the revised budget or I bring the proposed budget. We can have an open and honest discussion about it upfront on a monthly basis. So the report that you have right now for the district budget is from July 2020 through January 2021. And as you know, we have several different funding sources. These include the General Fund, the Tax Plan, federal grants, and other non-major grant funding. So I'm going to start with the General Fund. So far, we have collected $131.1 million in property taxes or ad valorem through January 2021. This accounts for 74% of our proposed budget as it was originally, when it was approved in July. As you know, approximately 80% of our property taxes are paid in January, so we've received the bulk of them. We've collected $47.7 million in sales tax. This includes collections through November of 2020 because we are 45 days in arrear with our sales tax, and we settled up for December, not until February 20th, February 10th, so it's not included in these. This is, accounts for 50% of our proposed budget. We've collected $103 million in MFP dollars from the state of Louisiana. This accounts for 58% of our proposed budget. Federal grants inclusive of our indirect cost and ROTC funding, we have collected 3.9 or 78% of our proposed budget. Our expenditures through January 2021 total $263.7 million, which is 57% of our proposed budget. As the proposed budget is shown, 62% of our expenditures are inclusive of salaries and benefits, and 21% of our expenditures are inclusive of state and local funding for type-one charters and local funding for our type-two and type-five charters. We are on track to end the fiscal year with a positive fund balance, and this is very important as we continue to build our reserves to provide for the instructional needs of all children throughout the district. The Tax Plan is a one-cent sales tax that provides for three separate propositions. Proposition 1 provides for our facilities and technology needs and receives 51% of the sales tax. Proposition 2 provides for alternative schools and receives 8% of the sales tax. And Proposition 3 provides for additional salary supplements to all district employees and receives 41% of the sales tax. As stated earlier, our sales tax is collected 45 days in arrears, so all figures in your one-pager are only going to be complete through November of 2020. Proposition 1 has collected a total of $20.3 million and has expended $13.5 million. It is currently on track with the proposed budget and will continue funding the projects of the district. Proposition 2 has collected $3.2 million and has expended $3.2 million. With the continued increases in sales tax, it is currently on track with proposed budget. Proposition 3 has collected $16.5 million and has expended $19.6 million. Again, as sales tax continues to increase, the collections being, being 45 days in arrear, the proposition is on track to go along with the proposed budget. Title 1 is federal funding provided to the district to supplement the instructional needs of students, especially those that are both economically disadvantaged or at risk. This funding is provided as a reimbursement basis only. The district must expend the funds and then be reimbursed for those expenditures on a monthly basis. Title 1 has collected $6.1 million and has expended $9.5 million. This is not inclusive of encumbrances that have not hit the account yet. We are currently on track with the proposed budget of $19.2 million. Child Nutrition Program is federally funded, provided to the district to ensure that all students have provided meals. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the district's Child Nutrition Program has worked diligently to ensure that all students have received meals, both our in-house learners and our virtual learners. The USDA provides funding on a reimbursement basis monthly. Child Nutrition has expended $13.2 million as an expended $20.9 million. We are currently on track to meet the proposed budget projections, and we are working with other grant opportunities to continue to meet the needs of all of our students. Our other non-major grants are also meeting budget projections. These grants, like Title, like Title 1 and Child Nutrition, are on a reimbursement basis. We have currently collected $24.8 million and expended $40.4 million. With all grant opportunities, the district plans to make full use of all monies provided and obtain all reimbursements on a monthly basis as allowed by those funding sources. Do any questions?
Can you hear me? Okay. In the future monthly updates, we will provide the board and the community with a graphic organizer to show this. I know Kelly gave a lot of information to show a simplistic way of it, maybe in that pie chart or something like that, just so you can be able to see how the funds are allocated. But overall, if you got anything that she said with all the math, is that we are on track for the year, and we should be going into, we will not be in the red by the end of the year moving forward.
Thank you. We have some questions, but I just sort of got my technology back. Did you have a question first? Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, President Tatman. Just a quick question, maybe even a statement. So we were on a call, there was an elected official's call yesterday for the, like the Black Caucus, and they were talking about the article again, about the projected districts not using the coronavirus money in the CARES Act and with the additional money getting ready to come in. If there's any way for us to like, put out a statement of what we used our CARES Act money for in the spirit of transparency in preparing for the next round of Corona's coronavirus relief money, just so that people know that we are like spending our money and like what our priorities are with the Corona, the CARES Act money. So just wanted to uplift that.
I'll be glad to get that information to you.
And then my second question is, I sent Dr. Narcisse the revenue projection for the, the state's general fund while this year we seem to be in a surplus and we'll, we'll be balancing. In 2022, there's a projected deficit. Is that the same case for us as a district? Or are we, do we have any additional projections for 2022 that we can start to think about now as we, as the state realizes an actual deficit for 2022?
Right. We are just beginning with the proposed budget. And right now, we are, we are slowly but surely working. As you know, I have always been very conservative. So usually it comes out a little bit better because I would rather lowball you a little than come out and say, oh, well, I'm so sorry. I guessed wrong. So as, as I continue with my conservative nature and working with the strategic plan and senior cabinet, we're going to work really hard to ensure that we are on track and that we stay in the black with our budget. That is always our goal.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Can I add one more thing?
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Yes. For the CARES Act, we will come out with lists. We are actually going to be talking to the board in a future meeting coming up around some of how we're going to use our dollars going into next year for some academic components of the CARES Act. So we will have that information for you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson.
Thank you for this, Ms. Lopez. And when, when you do bring the graphics and, and all of that.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just so hard to see up on a screen far away. Could we have a printed copy with a large enough font?
Absolutely.
That we can actually read?
No, that's not a problem. I'll be glad to do that for you.
Thank you very much. And I'm very pleased to know that we're going to be watching and monitoring this together and will be updated more often. And that we're going to really try to align our priorities and our strategic plan with our funding, and, and that makes a lot of sense to me, and I very much appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. I see no further questions from the board. Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you.
We move now to H1, Reports from Board Appointees to Committees, Agencies. Does anybody wish to make a report from their service? Seeing none, we now move to item I, the Consent Agenda. Mr. Howard?
Thank you. The following items are to be considered in routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as an item on the regular agenda for a separate vote preceding the last item on the regular agenda. Consent Agenda Item 2, Grant Louisiana Art and Science Museum. Consideration of a request for the approval of the Louisiana Art and Science Museum Grant Partnership to provide live educator-led STEM-based programs, LASM 360 Virtual Voyages, virtual field trips to be, to trips identified highest need students in East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Partnership Grant, Consideration of a Request for the Approval to Seek and Serve as District Lead for the LDOE Pathways to Prosperity Fast Forward Grant to Increase Career and College Opportunities for Students. Policy JBCE, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of School Board Policy JBCE, Public School Choice Policy. Consideration of a Request for the Authorization of the Superintendent and Staff to Request a Request for Proposal, to Seek Proposals to Provide for the Development of a Board Reportment and Redistricting Plan. Litigation, Consideration of a Request for the Approval of the Recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel, East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, and the Matter of Belfour USA Group Incorporated, Belfour Property Restoration versus Democracy Prep Louisiana Charter School and Others, Civil Action Number 2000096, United States District Courts for the Middle District of Louisiana and to Provide for Related Matters. And that is a so move.
Move by Mr. Howard, seconded by Mr. Lannis. Any question? First off, does anybody wish to pull any items off? Does any board member wish to pull an item off of the consent agenda? Seeing none and no questions from the board, are there any comments from the public on the consent agenda? Seeing no movement, we'll come back to the board. No other questions from board members. Madam Secretary, wait. Yeah, it's okay. You can wave at me. Ms. Ware Jackson?
Thank you, President Tatman. Now, you know, you're looking at me, aren't you? Mr. Shamlin, I'm going to ask you to give us a little bit of an explanation about the, the policy. But before I do that, I want to make a couple of comments about the grants that are before us. I want to thank LASM and in particular Ms. Nita over at LASM for putting this together, this virtual learning around astronomy. I love it when we can pull the arts and sciences together. And, and I also wanted to comment about CTEC in this, in the other grant proposal that they're, they're pursuing and the leadership role that they would take in that. I'm very proud of, of CTEC and especially proud that we would be leaders in EBR when we receive this grant. So, and from there, Mr. Shamlin, if you just give us a quick explanation of what that policy is regarding.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Yes, Policy JBCE is the Public School Choice Policy. It's been on the books for quite some time. The previous policy tracked at the time what state law required and what best these policies required. Over time, those changed, recent federal audit of our title programs brought to the, our attention the need to revise this policy, to bring it up to par, and to update it to make sure it's current with new law and new policy. Essentially, these revisions are pretty heavy. If you look at the old statute, I mean, the old policy, I really didn't include it because this is almost entirely new policy. It's written to basically do four things. Update the terminology, align the eligibility requirements, eliminate, basically eliminate additional requirements for ineligibility which were not legal under new law, and also allow the superintendent to develop regulations as needed as the law evolves. And so this new policy brings us up to speed, gets us aligned with new law, and, and keeps us current with the requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Shamlin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Any other questions before we move to a vote? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District 1, Mr. Baloo?
Yes.
District 2, Mr. Lannis?
Yay.
District 3, Mr. Howard?
Yes.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson?
Yes.
District 6, Ms. Dyson?
Yes.
District 7, Mr. Goday?
Yes.
District 8, Ms. Bernard?
Yes.
District 9, Mr. Tatman?
Yes. The item passes. We move now to item J1, Discussion, Consideration of an Application from ExxonMobil Corporation for an Industrial Tax Exemption and Related Matters. I think at this point, we'll bring Representatives of Exxon up. Is that correct? Yeah, I think they're in the other room. It may take them a minute to get here. There you go. In whatever order you all wish. Mr., in one second, do we want to wait on a motion? Or should we do a motion before we discuss?
I believe a motion first would probably be appropriate.
A motion first. Any motion on this item? Move by Ms. Bernard, seconded by Mr. Goday. I'm sorry. Housekeeping. Okay. Go right ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Papera. I'm the Energy and Planning Manager at the Baton Rouge Refinery for ExxonMobil. And I really want to just first of all, say thank you, President Tatman, Superintendent Narcisse, and the School Board Members for giving us the opportunity to talk to you today and bring this investment opportunity forward. We're really excited about this, and we want to share the opportunity with you and all the different benefits that it can bring. And the first part, I'm going to actually talk through some of the more details on the project. And then Ms. Moncada is going to share some of the community and the economic impacts across the area that we're, we're looking forward to bringing to Baton Rouge. And I think there's a presentation.
There you go.
So this next page actually highlights the facilities that we're talking about here. And this opportunity, we call it the Baton Rouge Refinery Integrated Competitiveness Project. And the application before you is for $230 million ITEP-eligible portion of the investment. The total investment is close to double of that. This facility, it's going to add new equipment, modernizing our facilities, and restoring our refinery competitiveness. It increases our ability to process advanced domestic crudes, best in industry. The position, and it also will position our site to attract future investment, both on the refining side and on the chemical side. It includes new technology to expand our capabilities to process these new crudes, and it's new technology throughout the refinery. The crudes that we're talking about here are everything from Canadian crudes all the way to Permian Basin crudes. So there's a significant range in the types of. So there's a significant range in the types of materials that we're talking about here. We'll also be installing new mooring facilities at the refinery docks, which will allow us to load larger marine cargoes that can go out onto open waters immediately coming off of the Baton Rouge facility. And then finally, it will install new environmental processing technology, which will voluntarily reduce our VOC emissions at the refinery by 10%. Any questions about the facility specifically or all? All right, I'll turn it over to Ms. Moncada, who'll share some of the community impact.
I'm going to do it to some music. It looks right.
Cue the music.
That's right. Good evening, everyone. And President Tatman, Superintendent Narcisse, and the board, before I even dive in, let me introduce myself, Gloria Moncada. Up until a couple of weeks ago, I was the ExxonMobil Baton Rouge Refinery Manager, but very recently have changed roles. I'm now Vice President of the Corporation, and I'm very honored to have spent time in Baton Rouge and coming to know what wonderful things the state has to offer. I've probably spent now a third of my career here in Baton Rouge through the years. Also, as a parent, a citizen, and a community member, I do want to take a quick second to thank you for your public service. I can only imagine how difficult this last 12 months have been. I would imagine probably amongst the most difficult that many of us have ever seen or many of you have ever seen. And I want to thank you for the care that you've taken with students, teachers, and schools. Thank you very much. So about this project, I want to give you a sense of why this project is so important. We've been working very closely, closely with the Governor's Office, Mayor President Broom and her staff for three years. From the minute I walked into this refinery three years ago, I have been working to get this project to this site. It is an extremely important project. It closes a competitiveness gap that we have here in the state that's somewhat common across the state relative to neighboring states. We are higher cost when it comes to pipelines and river transport and raw materials. We need to be able to close that gap. The corporation has been looking at how does it make investment in the Gulf overall to improve our competitive position. It can choose to spend that money wherever it wants to, where it gets the most economic benefit and return as a company. Frankly, over the last several years, most of that investment has gone to our Texas refineries. They are more advantaged. The investment dollar goes further and gets more out of our Texas refineries. That's why we've been working so hard over the last three years to try to bring this portion of investment here to Baton Rouge. Governor Edwards has been very supportive. He understands the economic benefit that this project brings. It's not just a benefit to our company in improving our competitiveness, but it brings, the investment brings economic ripple effect and helps in the economic recovery of our community, our city, and our state. What I'd like to do is give you a sense of how this is really a win-win from our perspective. And we've listed here some of the direct benefits. So as Jennifer mentioned, while we've applied for $230 million as part of the ITEP application, the actual spend of this project is nearly half a billion dollars. That's the total spend that this project brings. That amount of spend supports 600 new construction jobs for the next three years. Jobs, as you know, that have been lost, thousands of those jobs have been lost in this last year due to the pandemic. And as you know, companies have announced publicly, including ExxonMobil, massive cuts to their capital programs and to their investment. So for us to be able to win this project, we have really got to make it attractive to come here to Baton Rouge. There is very little capital that's available to spend. 600 construction jobs, like I said, at a time where so many have been lost. It also retains jobs. You know, I don't want to bring up other companies, but we all were shocked by the Shell convent, what happened there, right? Who would have thought that? That's what happens if you are not competitive in the industry. We need to keep the Baton Rouge Refinery competitive. We can't just barely hang on. We have to drive forward and be leading in competitiveness. That's what this project does. If we win the project, we are basically, like I said, spending nearly half a billion dollars. Over half of that is spent in Louisiana, and the majority of that is in Baton Rouge. Think about the economic engine that that jumpstarts to have that kind of spend in our We're going to go to a final decision on this project in March as far as the corporation making a decision on the project and whether it is attractive enough to bring here. And if, if it's approved, we start construction later this year. So sales tax revenue starts coming in, starting this year on this project, and brings $5 million. And then overall, even with the ITEP incentive, so the incentive is the $23 million roughly, that's the incentive offer that has been made to us, and we meet all the ITEP guidelines on this project. That $23 million offer gets you $43 million of prop, of additional property tax revenue when this project is coming online. I think it's very important to know, I think there's been a lot of misinformation or assumptions about the project will come anyway. That is a, an extremely dangerous assumption to make. Dangerous because that's a huge gamble in today's world where capital investment has been pulled back so strongly. What we do as a companies, we have 18 refineries around the world. We can build this project at any of those refineries. It's, the world is round, you know, products move, there's ships, there's pipelines. We can build anywhere in those 18 refineries. So there's got to be a reason to want to put it into Baton Rouge. There's got to be an economic benefit. What the ITEP incentive does is it helps level the playing field and remove some of those disadvantages we have versus Texas and some of the other countries that we could perhaps build this project. We are going to this final investment decision, like I said, in March. Over this last three years, we've brought this project two other times to the corporation to try to get it through, and it hasn't gone. It was not attractive enough. It's been borderline on its economics. We have come, this is the final time we're going to be able to bring it to the corporation. This is it. This is final decision. This project actually used to be one and a half times the cost of what it is now, and we had to trim it way back trying to make the economics work. So when you offer an ITEP incentive, you are helping those economics to work on the project. So I, I want us to just all be really careful. This is certainly in no way a guaranteed project. The, the thing I also want to make sure that we know is we are making a community commitment as well. We talked about the direct benefits of 600 jobs. We're retaining jobs when we're competitive as a refinery, we're able to keep running on that refinery and not de-rate it. We retain jobs. That's important to our local economy and our community. But there's also indirect benefit that we're driving. Three years ago, when I first got here, I had the opportunity to attend Dialogue on Race, and many of you may know Maxine Crump. She's an extremely impactful person in when she, she does that series with people. And she really helped open my mind in thinking about race, race, thinking about how do you drive economic equality and things like that? And she, she said something very impactful to me in that series, and that was, Gloria, stop trying to drive only through hearts and minds any changes that you want to make and recognize as a business leader, you have power in a different way to drive a difference. It's in the decisions that you make and the efforts that you make to be overtly different in this area. In this project, I have personally committed as the refinery manager and now in my next position, that we're going to be overtly different in trying to make sure this economic ripple effect makes its way to the most underserved parts of our community. And the way we're doing that is I've challenged the team, bringing me ideas and ways how we do that, how we create that direct benefit. And there's three very distinct ways we're doing that. One is if this project goes, we need people to work on the project. We need people to replace retirements. We're committing to 30 additional hires through the North Baton Rouge Industrial Training Initiative. If you're not familiar with that program, that's a free program that we work with BRCC and, and contract partners to provide craft training, industry training, fast-tracked, and then folks have an opportunity to work in the industry. We're committing with this project spend to be able to offer 30 more jobs to North Baton Rouge residents that are in that program. In addition, the challenge I gave the team is, again, we need the economic ripple effect to make its way also. And so we are making a very focused, dedicated effort to make sure we increase spend and attention towards local diverse businesses, specifically black-owned businesses. And we, we, you know, this is the area we've always worked in, but this is now about making targets and commitments for ourselves and making sure we really drive that. And the third way is then the contract partners that come onto the project to build the project, we have them join us as well in making this commitment to drive harder to get spend into black-owned businesses locally. That's how we're able to provide, at least how I feel personally as a business leader, make a difference. And so I'd like this project to not just make a difference for our company in making us more competitive, but to also help role model how business can lead and drive a difference on economic outcomes in the ways that we best are able to, to lean into that. So on the next page, what I'd like to just do is summarize.
Can I just stop?
Oh, yes, sir.
Mr. Goday, you want to wait?
I'll wait.
Okay. He'll have a question shortly. There you go.
Yes. Let me just wrap up. So again, the project prevents idling of units, well, if we become uncompetitive, and it helps retain jobs. It keeps investment in Louisiana, attracts investment into Louisiana, and you know investment brings jobs and it brings economic opportunity. It brings net additional tax revenue. A $23 million of ITEP incentive attracts $43 million of additional property tax revenue. And again, we're making this commitment to local businesses. We've got some pictures here of where, like I said, Maxine was so impactful for me and how I think about things as a leader. Last year, when the pandemic hit and we knew we needed masks to protect our essential workers at the plant, thousands of masks. And I'll tell you, you know, it's a big corporation. What we're used to doing is pressing a button, clicking a button, and off goes, you know, our global procurement and, and grab some national company and it, it would buy masks for us. And I said, stop. Surely, there must be a diverse supplier here in Baton Rouge that can make masks for us, that has need, that needs this business. And sure enough, Lemonade is who we found, and we worked closely with Annette Gray, Annette Gray, and she, I mean, it was amazing, the quality masks that she made with her team. We ultimately ended up not just purchasing for a Baton Rouge refinery. I then talked to our other refinery managers and chem plant managers across the Americas, and orders came in from Texas, from Canada, from Kansas. And then I called personally our contractor partners here in Baton Rouge and said, hey, follow us, do this too. So over 5,000 masks through Annette's own business and many hundreds more through the contract partners also joined in. That's, that to me is the way that we lean in, and I want to keep leaning in, not just in the base refinery, but with this project and also the North Baton Rouge Industrial Training Initiative. We've tripled that program over the last several years, created additional tracks, and now we're doing direct hiring into ExxonMobil from that program. So to wrap up, the next slide, thank you. I ask you to please, let's work together to bring this project. It is certainly not guaranteed. Whatever we can do to put our best foot forward in March, when I, when I'm in front of the management committee and trying to get this project over the line, the ITEP incentive is certainly, certainly going to be an important factor in that. So before I finish up, I know I've taken a few minutes too long, I do want to introduce David Oldree, who is the new refinery manager, so that he can be sure to tell you his support for this as well.
I have a couple of questions on the board.
Yes, please.
I think I want to move through them, if it's okay. Mr. Goday, you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to bring out a couple of points because some people may not be as nearly as familiar with some of these things as maybe, as I'm sure you guys really are. People need to understand that the refineries up and down the Mississippi River really benefited for many, many years because of the Louisiana offshore oil port. And when the United States was importing millions and millions of barrels of oil a day, that was a very good, foresighted investment that our state made in that and really helped the competitiveness of all the refineries up and down the river. That situation has changed now. The United States is importing almost very little. On a net basis, I think we're net exporting oil today, even though there's still some imports, but there's exports to offset that. And a lot of that is coming out of the Texas area in Eagle, Eagle Ford, Eagle?
Yes, Permian, Eagle Ford.
Permian Basin.
All those areas.
And, and so the, the economics of getting crude to the refineries in Louisiana have really changed. What was an advantage to us is now a disadvantage. And also, people think of crude oil and not realizing that crude oil ranges from everything from almost tar to, or tar, all the way to something that looks lighter than gasoline. And refineries are just not set up to process all of that. And so I'm sure the Baton Rouge refinery was set up to process a range of crudes, but not nearly the lights that come out. The, the crude that comes out of the fracking revolution is very, very light crude, and we're just not set up to do that, and that part of this project does that. And then thirdly, people don't realize the range of products that come out of a refinery. Many, many things, including the stuff that makes your tires black to the, if you look at the Exxon Chem Plant across the road, they make the rubber that goes into your tires, the black that goes into your tires, the ethylene that goes into the plastics, the propylene that goes into the plastics, and on and on and on. So it's not just fuel that comes out of that. That refinery supports an entire industrial complex in Exxon, but also beyond Exxon. And so I think the Convent Refinery gave us a real-world example of what happens when you don't stay competitive. That refinery had been through many, many hands, bouncing back and forth between Shell and Saudi Arabia and this, that, and the other, and it never really got the investments to keep it up to, up to, up to competitive levels, and it died. And so people who don't think that that can happen, it can. It really can. And so I really hope you guys success in getting this package as capital expenditure because if it can, it's the kind of thing that can be the foundation for the Exxon Refinery and Exxon presence in Baton Rouge for the next 25 to 30 years. So I, I really appreciate you bringing this forward to us, and I hope my fellow board members will join in supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. Mr. Lannis?
I can wait till they finish their presentation. Thank you.
Proceed.
Okay. I did want to introduce Dave Oldree so he can wrap up. Yes?
Thank you, Gloria. President Tatman, Superintendent Narcisse, members of the board, it's our, it is our privilege to be here this evening. Thank you for having us, and thank you for everything that you do to make our schools better in this community. It's incredibly important work, and, and making the schools better makes our community better. So my sincere, sincere thank you. And Mr. Goday, I couldn't say it any better than, than what you just said, so thank you for that. So I'm Dave Oldree. I'm the new refinery manager here at ExxonMobil Baton Rouge. I've been here for three weeks, three weeks in Baton Rouge, three weeks at the refinery, and in fact, three weeks in this country. I'm really excited to be here. I'm excited to be living in Baton Rouge. It seems like just an absolutely wonderful city, and we're looking forward to getting involved in the community and, and getting to know a lot of people in the, in the city. I'm excited about the role. I'm excited to have the opportunity. a lot of people in the city. I'm excited about the role. I'm excited to have the opportunity to work with the amazing men and women that operate the Baton Rouge refinery safely and reliably every day. And for the topic here tonight, I'm very excited about this project. I'm excited about the win-win benefits that this project brings, not only to the competitiveness of our refinery and the long-term viability of our refinery, but also the benefits that this project brings to the community in terms of jobs and very targeted focus on businesses in the local area. And with your support tonight, I'm committing to work very directly with Gloria as we move this project forward and try to secure funding to make this a success. And I also look forward to coming back here, maybe in a year, a year and a bit, and give you guys an update on how the project is going and how our community contributions as part of the project is going as well. And with that, I think that does end our formal part of the presentation, and we happy to take any additional questions.
Mr. Lannis?
Yes, thank you, President Tatman. I just wanted to be very clear and direct with you all and let you know where my support stands. I 110% stand behind this project, and I side with my colleague, Mr. Goday, in saying I hope that our board stands behind it also. And I'm gonna tell you why. About a year ago, when you all came before us, the relationship wasn't as strong as it is now. And I made a direct request saying, could you please reach out to us prior to these projects coming up? That way, we'll know what's going on. Not only have you all done it, but you've done it with due diligence. When I got on the phone call and I had those meetings with you all, my main areas of focus were three. It was to drive creation, to retention, and also how does it look educationally for our students in terms of the opportunities that we can build out. And when I talked to you guys and staff, it was a very clear conversation. And they followed up time and time again, either by email or by text. And just to put this into how much you've helped businesses, not just around this parish, but specifically inside of my district, there's a restaurant named Bayou Cafe. It's been there for years. When COVID-19 hit, it struck his business, Mr. Brown, Mr. Frank Brown, a revered legend in that area, it struck his business so tough that he thought he was going to shut down. He said, when he had conversations with you all, you all had a lot of those subcontractors and those contractors come to his business every single day as patrons, making sure that he had a thriving business. That meant a lot. When you talked about the creation of, the educational creations, how you were going to collaborate with our local tutoring and ACT prep companies, that meant a lot. When you speak specifically towards direct hiring pipelines in North Baton Rouge where unemployment and crime is rampant, that's what really began to turn the wheels for me. And just so people understand, last year, unemployment rose as high as 14%. That is about 61,073, I'm sorry, 61,733 people were unemployed last year. We're at a time now, well, we saw what happened with Georgia Pacific near Zachary. We see what's currently happening in Texas, and it's time to grow and modernize our infrastructure. So again, thank you all for this presentation. Thank you for the follow-ups. You absolutely have my support.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Lannis. Ms. Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Tatman. Thank you all for coming this evening. I want to speak to the board members. I'm a big supporter of the ITEP program, because the industry in this area, including ExxonMobil, are some of the largest employers in our area. Without Standard Oil and ExxonMobil, Baton Rouge would be a little cow town with a cotton gin and a stockyard. That's before our time, so none of us remembers that, but if we go back to our history books, we know that that is true. Even our local universities flourish because of ExxonMobil. Those universities support the programming at ExxonMobil in their engineering departments and their agriculture departments, but ExxonMobil supports the programming in those universities with large endowments. Second, ExxonMobil is the largest property taxpayer in the state of Louisiana and in the parish of East Baton Rouge. That has not changed. That probably, we hope, that doesn't change. Third, prior to the current structure of the ITEP, we, likely, they would have received 100% because it was done by the Board of Commerce and Industry. So now that there's been a change to it, we're receiving an additional 20% that we never got before. So in, under this project, it's about $22 million in additional revenues to the parish, to the school system. Also, the 600 jobs for three years of the construction of the project, that's very attractive to me, as well as the 18 to 24 new positions of commitment to hire from the North Baton Rouge Industrial Training Initiative of the trade industries. It's hard to measure the impact of ExxonMobil on the local community, but I think it's safe for us to say that we are all beneficiaries of it, that our livelihoods and our well-being depend upon it. And I appreciate your support of the program. So thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Ms. Wade Jackson?
Thank you, President Tatman. Thank you all for the presentation, and I just wanted to express some of the things that I really like about this project. And my colleagues have already said some of these, so, you know, forgive me for repeating some of this, but I particularly am appreciative for the new jobs coming in for the North Baton Rouge Industrial Training Initiative. I was a part of that from the very beginning, and it's been a wonderful program. So I'm very excited to see that these men and women will be able to benefit from this. And job retention is just more important now than ever before. So I do appreciate that. And, but in particular, the engagement and inclusion of small businesses, and specifically for the diversity within the suppliers, that is exceptional, because I've heard that a lot, and, you know, requests for that. So when I saw that, I was particularly happy to see that. And then this one little tiny thing about your efforts and goals to reduce the carbon emissions, I can't tell you that. I think everybody across the city will really appreciate that. And I'm glad that this can happen through this project. So thank you for presenting this, and I support it as well, obviously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wade Jackson. I don't see any other questions from board members. Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions from board members, we'll go to the audience on the ITEP item. Anyone wish to speak? For those of you who wish to speak, you'll see the timer on that little machine. You probably know the routine already. It's green. You have three minutes. It turns yellow at one, and then it red, your time's expired. Thank you so much.
Yes, hi. My name is Valencia Johnson, and I am the president of the East Baton Rouge Parish Association of Educators. And although we applaud Exxon for their community involvement, we feel that no money that is allocated to the students should be given away. If we have money to give away, even for a project like theirs, we feel like it should be given to the staff and put into the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any other comments from the audience?
Hello. My name is Gerard Malonson. I'm the Vice Chancellor for Workforce Solutions at Baton Rouge Community College. I want to be very brief here, but I do want to say our support of the initiative. I've been with BRCC since 2010, kind of one of the founding individuals, worked closely with Ms. Wade and everybody. And the key thing about this initiative is just the growth of opportunity. Moved here from Keweenaw, Illinois. It was very founded on manufacturing. My parents were product of the Great Migration, and now it's number nine in crime in the area because of industry left and the lack of support. This job, this 600 temporary jobs, it is quote-unquote temporary, but that is direct opportunity of on-the-job experience that our students will have access to. That on-the-job experience is one thing that you cannot train, and those open the doors for further opportunity and further career in the construction sector and the petrochemical sector. So obviously, we definitely would like our students to have those opportunities, and more importantly, to keep that revenue and wealth and those doors open for citizens that look like me in the Baton Rouge region and in Louisiana. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Malonson. Thank you for the work you do with BRCC. Mr. Dexter?
Good evening. Good to see you all again today. I was here last week at the committee of the whole. My name is Eric Dexter. I'm the Director of Business Development for Civil Solutions Consulting Group, which is a Baton Rouge-based civil engineering firm. That also happens to be a black-owned civil engineering firm. But today, I'm here as a representative of a board member of the Baton Rouge Area Chamber, as well as the Chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. I am in favor of this project, and hopefully you will offer your support as well, mainly because of the industrial, the North Baton Rouge Industrial Training Initiative, and also the utilization of diverse suppliers. Being a Business Development Director for civil engineering firm, that is exactly what I do on a day-in, day-out basis. I attended their virtual diverse supplier forum yesterday, and I think they had well over 400 or so attendees. So the engagement is there, as Mr. Lannis said. I think this will be something that'll be extremely impactful for not only North Baton Rouge, but local minority-owned firms that have just come off one of the most hardest-hit years that we've all experienced from a private sector in 2020. And I'll also say with the tax dollars that are going to be generated, I think that's additional $40 million tax dollars that would not be generated if the project didn't go forward. So thank you again for your commitment and your service, and I hope we have your support.
Thank you, Mr. Dexter. Any other comments from the audience?
Good evening. I think it's a crying shame that we want to give corporate welfare to a multi-billion-dollar industry, and it is a crying shame that we are having this meeting tonight, when we have more than 20,000 people currently in our city that still do not have electricity. What are you telling our children when our staff are using their own personal resources to actually provide to our kids to be educated? What are you telling the children when their staff are not happy because they cannot afford to be able to provide their own children with good meals? What are you telling the children when right now we need mental health services because we have had more natural disasters than ever before? And yet, we want to give ExxonMobil $240 million cut. Why? Children with disabilities and regular education children are struggling right now. We did not even have enough money to provide laptops to every single child in this school system. We are constantly having to close our doors because of COVID. We haven't even provided our staff with vaccinations, and yet you want to give them a $240 million cut? Even are you looking at the amount of money that they would actually have cut if we do, if we allowed them this ITEP? How much money will we lose in 10 years when we had the lady to give the amount on the budget? That did not reflect litigation. That did not reflect everything else that we have dealing with COVID. That did not, that did not reflect our new four people in our budget, that's a million-dollar salary. That did not reflect the 88 vacancies that we have that have not been filled. That did not reflect the 20 positions that Dr. Narcisse is going to ask y'all for in the future. It did not reflect the $425,000 that we have already obligated ourselves to give to a discriminated charter by the name of Emerge. Think about this. What are you telling the children? I looked at how Mr. Tatman said he wanted a high school in his district. I looked at how Mr. Lannis talked about the things that his district didn't have. I looked at how Mr. Howard and Mr. Lannis talked about how they could have fell through the cracks. How many kids would fall through the cracks when you give ExxonMobil corporate welfare? My child and I, along with many other families, cannot get welfare in a time right now in this global pandemic. But yet, you want to give it to a multi-billion-dollar industry? What are you telling the children? What are you telling their families that are constantly paying taxes every single day to this school system and bringing their kids here? What are you telling me? I pay taxes in every last one of your districts. What are you telling me that maybe I should sell and move? Because ExxonMobil is not going to leave Louisiana if you do not give them this exemption.
Thank you for your comments.
That's what we think about.
Thank you for your comments. Next?
Hello. Once again, you must forgive me if I'm a little more irritable. We've been without power all week, and still I'm going to have to come up here and deal with y'all and what y'all trying to do. Now, it's very simple. Who you want to pay taxes? Me or them? Their CEO just got a 25% increase. He makes over $20 million a year, multi-billion-dollar company. But you want to shift the tax burden on me, and after 10 years, over 10 years of teaching, y'all can't even be bothered to pay me $50,000. But you want me to pay more taxes and them to pay less? That's shifting tax burden. She talked about it. We call it Reaganomics. All that stuff rolling downhill, I've been at the bottom long enough to tell you, when y'all do this, only one thing rolls down to us on the bottom, and it sure has never been and will never be: money. It's very simple. We don't have what we need. Most of the teachers in my school had to buy their own stuff to set up the walls and to set up the different things to keep them safe from COVID. Y'all didn't provide for that. They did. And you ain't, you never paid them enough to do that. And you know you don't. How many times did our former president sit up there, how many times did we go into our budget and spend deficit spending? Mr. Goday can tell you how many times he had to deal with deficit spending. We do not have enough money coming into this system. Yet you want to just hand away more. Where's that money going to come from? We have a new superintendent. Not even all of the fancy things he gets on top of the salary, over a quarter million. Four more people out of state, over $100,000 each. Put them all together, that's near three-quarters of a million dollars every year you're now going to have to come up with for upper echelon. You said it's going to be budget-neutral. What you going to do? Start firing a whole bunch of people? Fire teachers? Get rid of some schools? Sell them off to the charters? How are you going to make this budget-neutral? How are you going to do anything with the budget if you keep giving away our money when your teachers and our kids don't have what we need? It's not about Exxon. It's about what we need in the classroom we don't have and you can't provide and the money you handing away. So please, give us what we need. Give the children what they need. We need this money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members. I'll be brief. My name is Adam Knapp. I'm the President and CEO with the Baton Rouge Area Chamber. We appreciate all of your time, and of course, all the teachers, the principals. My three kids, who are at three different EBR schools, have seen what you have done over the last year, and especially this crazy last week, and just very much indebted to all of your team for what they're doing for the kids of this community. I want to share with you why, on behalf of the business community, this is such an important project, and just to shape up a couple of the thoughts of where we sit in terms of tax revenue. This is a competitive project. But for this investment, our community will not receive what this can potentially be. That is also a but-for on the tax revenue that would come with or without your decision, right? So you have the chance to influence the potential for $5 million in sales taxes through the ability to incentivize this investment. You've heard about the long-term impact of what this means. We can see if we don't do this, what happened in Shell with convent of loss of jobs, but it is also the fact that you have here already a company paying $40 million in taxes annually, $17 million in taxes to the EBR School District in 2020. You have a company who has one in 10 jobs in this community can be attributed back to their influence and their economic power in this community. It's also that with the potential of what this can be in the future, the name of the project is meaningful. The acronym BRIC is very much about this being an integrated project, a building brought to make Baton Rouge more competitive for investments in the future. We're in the midst of, or toward the end of, we hope, a global pandemic that has absolutely destroyed demand for a lot of the products of this industry, and we are hopeful to see resurgence. Baton Rouge has lost 60,000 jobs. We still are down somewhere around 15,000 to 20,000 jobs at this point in the pandemic. A big chunk of those are industrial construction jobs that our community has lost. You have the ability to influence 600 of those coming back tonight. And that is a big part of what can happen this year, is not just the sales tax revenue, but the jobs that'll help spur us out of this economic pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp.
will generate a total, when we think about those indirect and induced effects, a total of about $500 million in new sales for the regional economy and about $265 million in additional earnings. In terms of jobs, we've heard about roughly 600 jobs on average, but when we think about those broader effects, it really is going to be a bigger support with total jobs supported by construction peaking in the third year of construction at upwards of 2,000 jobs in the regional economy. In terms of operations, you know, we've heard a little bit about how this will help sustain activity. Well, the long-run trend in refining has been one of gradual employment declines. Obviously, there have been one-off times where you've seen employment take a bigger hit if a site is closed, as we saw recently with the convent refinery. But the long-run trend has been about a half a percent decline, and so when we think about what this means in terms of sustaining jobs over the long run, as we get out just to the first 10 years of the project operation, I would estimate that that has saved by about 84 direct jobs at Exxon and in total for the Baton Rouge economy, about 210 jobs. In my review of the tax implications of this, again, just to be clear, unlike some incentive programs that might actually require upfront investments or dollars to be spent, the design of this incentive means dollars start coming in in year one on the property tax side, and even with the ITAP exemption, it's estimated to generate about $21 million in new property taxes over the first 20 years, or even looking out longer with 40 years being a realistic lifespan of a project like this over 40 years, about $43 million in property tax revenues, about 47% of which would come to the East Baton Rouge Parish public school system. On top of that, there's additional sales tax revenues that will come in and also benefit local government, so I just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments from the audience, we'll go back to the board. Ms. Dyson.
Thank you, President Tatman. I just want to thank everyone that's come out to share your insights with us tonight. It's a, it's a opportunity, I believe, for us to think bigger than the actual stats that you, I do believe that the stats that you brought are wonderful and great, and a true partnership that we've had for many years will be continued. But I see it as a way to help encourage the learning that we provide in our pre-K-12 and continue that learning through partnerships with you and others, and try to keep our spouses and our children and our grandchildren employed here in East Baton Rouge Parish in Louisiana. The drain and the outmigration of our children has been so detrimental to what we really can be, and this is just one example of a project that we need greatly. So many of us have been touched in various different ways with this COVID pandemic, and we've seen sites be closed, and we've seen reductions, and this is just a great opportunity for us, and I will always be a forward thinker, and I always can get behind supporting great opportunities like this one. So thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you, everyone, for all of your viewpoints.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. See some action from Mr. Shamblin. Would you like to say something, sir?
Yeah, I want to make sure that the motion on the floor is to approve the application. I'm not sure if that language was specifically used, but that's important. We learned in the past with these applications, be sure we're very specific with language. It should be the motion to approve. I think Ms. Bernard made the motion. I just want to ask for some clarity.
Ms. Bernard, make sure the language says approve, and Mr. Goday, both the mover and second agree with that.
Yes, motion to approve the industrial tax exemption application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other comments from the board, so I'm just going to take a moment here. I want to thank Exxon for the education process that you all went through. I thought it was outstanding. I thought there was a lot of good information. You all answered our questions. These are important decisions that we make as a school board member, so I want to thank you for the great work that you've done, not only with me, but with other board members in the community. And Ms. Gloria, wherever you go, and just make sure you send more back down here, okay? I've heard from the governor's office and from the Department of Economic Development. I know they're in, you know, major support of this, not only for East Baton Rouge, but for the state of Louisiana. We can educate all the children we want. We can send them to Baton Rouge Community College. We can get them ready to work, but if we don't provide opportunities for them to go to work and have good jobs, good-paying jobs, then we're spinning our wheels here. So I want to thank you all for your potential. If this goes through, if we get the ITAP, and if we're chosen, potential project that's going to bring a lot of benefit to East Baton Rouge Parish. And I thought I would have the last comment, but Mr. Lannis, you're up. No, it's okay. You can go ahead.
I'm sorry, because I actually thought about something as you were talking about, and Tatman, and the people who you said were supportive of this. I know another organization, the Baton Rouge North Economic Development District, which is comprised of several minority business owners that work closely with our city, with our local officials, as well as the mayor's office, to build support around these areas. So I know they also have support, as well as my understanding that the East Baton Rouge Parish Metro Council is also in collaboration and also support this measure as well.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Lannis. Seeing no other questions from the board or comments from the board, Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District two, Mr. Lannis.
Yes.
District three, Mr. Howard.
Yes.
District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
Yes.
District nine, Mr. Tatman.
Yes. The item is approved. We now move to item K1, Announcement of Meetings. Ms. Dyson.
Board retreat to be held on February 20th, 2021, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Southern University Athletic Field House. Board retreat to be held on February 21st, 2021, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Southern University Athletic Field House. Board workshop to be held on March 4th, 2021, at 4:00 p.m. at the Professional Development Center. Committee of the whole meeting to be held on March 4th, 2021, immediately following the board workshop at the Professional Development Center. LSBA Annual Convention to be held March 7th through 9th, 2021, at the Shreveport Convention Center. Summer all board members may attend. Regular board meeting to be held on March 18th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. at the Professional Development Center. Board workshop to be held on March 4th, 2021, immediately following the board workshop at the Professional Development Center. LSBA Annual Convention to be held March 7th through 9th, 2021, at the Shreveport Convention Center. Summer all board members may attend. Regular board meeting to be held on March 18th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. at the Professional Development Center.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Mr. Howard?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, President Tatman. I just wanted to publicly thank Southern University Athletic Director Roman Banks and the Office of the President with Dr. Katari Williams and Dr. Beldner for allowing us this opportunity to have our retreat on the campus and all of the work they did in helping us with the planning and logistics of this retreat. So thank you, Southern, for that partnership.
And thank you, Mr. Howard, for putting that together. I knew you were instrumental in helping make that happen, and we've had great experiences in the retreats we've done at Southern before. And Ms. Dyson, I didn't mean to cut you off. I thought you were finished reading.
I was just going to move to adjourn.
Oh, well, not quite yet, because I think we've got more. Mr., we're having so much fun. Mr. Lannis wants to go again.
I'm piggybacking off everybody, and I thank you again, for President, Mr. Tatman. But also, I'll let the superintendent speak more towards it. Recently, there was a meeting held at the Southern University Law Center in unison with the Southern University Ag Center, who want to collaborate on scholarships for our students. So that will be 100 scholarships every single year, which includes housing, free computers, as well as food and meals for those students, and it also includes tutoring. And I'll just let the superintendent speak more towards it. He spoke with the Chancellor of the Law Center, and I think they also donated some printers to the East Baton Rouge Parish school system as well.
Do you want to comment on it? I think he's asking you to comment on it.
Yeah, we're super excited, especially about the partnership that we have with the Chancellor from the Law School at Southern University, and I'm just appreciative. We had pictures of the faculty and staff, but just the contribution that they give to our school system and also how they're expanding our partnership, and we could not do this without their work. And so I just wanted to say thank you again to the Chancellor of the Law School at Southern University and all of our partners that we work with.
Thank you all very much. Ms. Dyson moves to adjourn.